...to convene at 7:30. Will you all join me? I approve a proposal. Will you join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to welcome Cindy, first of all. And tonight is our board reorganization. We need to elect new officers. Do I have a nomination for president?
I'll nominate Tom Turk for president.
Second.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James? Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll vote yes. All right.
There's really not a reason not to, right? If you voted yes, you're thought.
Maybe my answer's no. Do I have a nomination for vice president?
Move to nominate Isaiah Crowell.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
I'll vote yes.
And I'll vote yes. Clerk? Do I have a nomination for clerk?
I'll nominate Sandy Lorke for president.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
That's Dane.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Treasurer? Do I have a nomination for treasurer?
I'll nominate James Carter.
Second.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
I'll say yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Yeah, that's right. We only have the CISA rep line here.
Yeah. It's coming. Guess who gets that?
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any corrections, changes? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Are opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April thirteenth. Come on. Have a second? Thank you. Any corrections? Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah? And I'll vote yes. All right. In the interest of time, I will just defer to Mark.
Thank you for your time. So several things I've mentioned. Received a donation from the Mazamani Basketball Association of $1,700. That will go towards the refinishing of the Meso gym floor. Now, some people would ask, well, you just re-did the floor last year. That's correct, but with all our corks, if we sand them down, paint them, we're applying. We usually go every two to three years, but we're putting a second coat on to maintain the lines and all the artwork and everything. So that will help to fray the cost, about $2,400 total for like an elementary gym. So.
And that, the MBA?
The association, yes.
Is that the Wednesday-Sunday group?
That is the Wednesday-Sunday group. And Jim, who started that?
That started way before BS, before Shire.
Okay.
God reserve time before that?
Oh, yeah. It had to start in the seventies.
Seventies.
And it's a health group who get together every Wednesday and Sunday, and they donate a dollar each time they play. James is an alumnus, and if you can believe it, I'm an alumnus of it too. And I think Isaiah's played there a few times, too.
Couple times, yes.
Retired.
So it's a great group of individuals who have done a lot of things for the district. I mean, mostly related to gymnasiums, because that's the part that they use, but very generous contributions.
Item number two. This past year, if you've been in attendance at meetings or followed agendas, we did, our roofing project had several starts and stops. So at the end of the project, we approached our consultant for a reduction in their fees and wanted to notify that they gave us a 20 percent reduction, which is equivalent to $12,500 for those fees. So appreciative. Keith and I, the president, had a conversation, shared expectations, and asked for a reduction and received it. Other things, other good news later on the agenda, but here, because it impacts some of the other things we're talking about tonight. Our health insurance, I think, as you remember, last year, we switched over to Unity. They gave us a nine percent cap. Their initial renewal was six percent. We asked them to do better at five and a half percent. One of the things I shared, and Aaron and Penny were in attendance, so thank you for their information and support. We keep on hearing about Affordable Care Act fees, and they were suggesting to us that those fees would be almost five percent of our renewal. And question that was getting ready for them to say, okay, well, you said that's how much the fees were last year. How much did you end up paying? But we didn't get to that conversation, because in the last conversation we had with M3, our renewal is now at zero for '15-'16 with no changes. We did inquire into a freeze or cap for '16-'17. We were given two scenarios that we're not interested in, and we'll take the zero percent, and that's what will be recommended to the board. On dental, we're still awaiting some final figures. That's something that you'll hear about on May 11th. We have not increased fees, dental fees, since 2008, and our activity, we're self-insured. Our activity has been below what we'd assessed, so as I've shared previously, we're looking into making our dental program comparable to other educational people. Something that, so the scenarios we asked them to look at was increasing our maximum benefit to 1,500, adding a orthodontic benefit, which we do not have, or the third option is what we're waiting for, is maintaining a thousand dollar max benefit, but the two cleanings would not be counted against the max benefit. The other component of it that we've asked is that, you know, there's times, as everybody knows, insurance is about paying for things you don't plan on having or you can't afford. And part of the dental world right now, and we would sign on to this, and it only costs us if we use it, but if we have an employee that has a medical issue that may impact their dental hygiene, they could qualify for additional cleanings. So, for example, people shared with me, if they have chemotherapy, sometimes they end up losing all their teeth a couple of years later due to the chemo. I don't know the specifics, but I've heard that from more than one person. So what we would be able to do by signing on to that component of the plan, again, pay as you go or pay as needed, is that if an individual qualified for a specific health disease issue, they could qualify for additional cleanings to help maintain their existing dental. So it's been good. Again, Bree Hillbrand is now our primary contact, and we're hoping to hear back from her sometime this week, and then the information will come to the board on the 11th. Couple things people heard about in the State Journal about conference realignment. A lot of scenarios. Right now, what, and this past Friday, the Capitol Conference superintendents met, and we are back to, the question was asked to the superintendents, would we accept Deerfield in as a part of the Capital South? Now, part of this is for relief, since we've indicated we're going to eight man. They need, in two years, sixteen in the Southern Conference. And I apologize, it's, I don't have a phone, I mean. To do this, this has to be unanimous vote, but for this to happen, both the North and South agreed to the following, which was the North would play football against the South Central Conference as the relief, and the South would no longer play the North in football. As we all know, larger schools in general tend to have bigger teams, and that was, you know, questions of competitive advantage, et cetera. So that was one part, but the trade-off was, is that for the relief, for that to occur, the North asked, would the South play one additional game in softball and baseball every year with the South Central? So the Capital South would have, they just play one game right now. In the future, it'd be a home and away. And I'm here to report that it was a unanimous yes by all participating schools and school districts. Tonight, Deerfield votes on whether they want to enter into the Capitol Conference, and then I'll make an announcement tomorrow, based on, once I'm informed. We are pursuing, and we'll have updates, but, and I'm sure perhaps some of you may have been approached, Rich has continued to pursue a potential softball co-op with Barnabell, as well as looking for a co-op with swimming. As you know, co-ops only work if both groups are amenable to it, and I think we've done a good job at understanding. Sometimes we've asked people, and they've said, no, it doesn't work, and then we understand that, okay, it doesn't work, just as there may be a time for us that one no longer works for us, and we hope that we'll, the same, you know, reciprocal response. In terms of planning, upcoming plannings, we'll be scheduling meeting confer with employee groups. Budgets, upcoming budgets, we probably, having a finance meeting to discuss the working budget. Of course, we need, not of course, we need a working budget approved prior to July 1 to pay bills. Our final budget, of course, is approved in the fall. We will also be, as Aaron has mentioned previously, be bringing to you, probably, Aaron, you think, the first board meeting in June with budget adjustments. That will require us to post in the New Sicilero for the adjustments, and the board will then be asked to work on that. In our finance meeting, we should also talk about Todd, or I think previously at the last meeting, Aaron talked about the current performance as we see it. It's operating within the budget. We established, of course, that is not a balanced budget, but we're doing a little bit better. Adoptions. May 11th will be a busy meeting. We will definitely have the math adoptions prepared, because tomorrow, there will be, tomorrow there'll be another language arts reading adoption meeting. With the math adoptions, are most of the recommended curriculum materials is coming from one company, so we have been able to get reductions in costs. Because of that, we'll be presenting that to you. We are hopeful to also have language arts reading to you on the 11th. Lastly, liability government property insurance fund. There's a proposal in the state, the '15-'17 budget to take the state of Wisconsin out all of the insurance business. There has been amended, crafted by Harler Markline. It's my understanding the joint finance committee has approved it, giving the local government property insurance fund two more years of life in terms of dealing, allowing for liability. So right now, we just opened bids. We'll bring that to you in terms of our general liability for sure on the 11th. We're hoping also during that process, we ask for the, some insurance quotes based on the local government property insurance fund, which we traditionally use. For the bid deadline today, that nobody could get that. One of the factors of suggesting a new practice or a new statute in February and telling people that it will happen, once the budget is approved, it is no one's prepared to handle the increased consumer demand. So it's a very positive thing, but Senator Markline had suggested, indeed, we have to phase it out. It is a very real, and it will be more expensive proposition. So in two years, and we perhaps will have two more years to plan for the future, and we'll go from there. So we're hoping to get some quotes in the next couple of weeks, but I don't, you know, we're also hopeful that what we have will remain competitive, and it has been affordable. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, public input. Derek?
Over the past, I've been kind of monitoring the disbursements of the school district for the past year, and I noticed that there's a lot of decent amount of money for mileage reimbursement. One question I have, how, is this being offered to, if we're offering it to most employees, is this being offered to even like our coaches? All the way out, I mean, because the coaches don't make a lot of money to begin with. So is that being conveyed to them? Do they have the opportunity to receive that benefit as well? Is that, I don't know if that's being conveyed to them or not. And then I'm assuming with all the miles that are driven, there's verification by somebody that they're actually business miles. Well, when you get to the top, who verifies that? I mean, because the board authorizes the money to go out to disbursements, but where's the accountability to make sure that, per se, one employee is making sure that they're driving, that they're not charging us from coming from home to work, or something like that? Where's the accountability at that? I mean, who's authorized and verifying that those miles are legit business miles? Because of my work, if we drive, you know, we have to turn it in and verify, somebody verified that those miles weren't actually approved and verified that they're business miles being driven. So when the board authorizes the money to go out, who authorizes the verification on that? I think there should be some accountability in that department.
Okay. Well, normally, we wouldn't debate during public portion, and I won't debate, but I will tell you this. As far as the coaching staff goes, I don't know what the policy is.
Tom, I can share that. Mileage reimbursement must be pre-approved for coaches. Right now, our coaches don't travel outside, you know, how should I put it? They're usually on the bus, for example. And then we also have school vehicle. If, you know, for example, with football, we may need to have, you know, additional spaces, so. But, you know, if it's merited and approved, yes, that would occur.
So who approves it for the top?
So basically, it's like this. Our, first of all, we trust our entire staff enough to know that they are professional enough to only turn in business miles. And it is tracked through payroll or, no, no.
Accountant.
Payroll.
Accountant.
Payroll.
Thank you. To make sure that they're turning in what's, you know, what's appropriate. I don't think it's been, ever been amused, that I know of, that I've ever heard of, and like I said, we have the utmost trust in our staff that they're going to only turn in business miles.
So there should be mileage logs that.
There has to be, yes.
For open record.
Yes.
Okay. Because I think maybe once in a while, we should look at that, too, just to, yeah, I understand you're trusting.
Everything is looked at.
I understand you're trusting, but it should be looked at, because, I mean, just one employee, I mean, could put almost, oh, just over 3,000 miles on us from April last year to April this year. That seems like a lot.
It might seem that way, but if an employee has a lot of work that's outside the district or a lot of different things to do, I'm not, I will never ask an employee of our district to pay to do their jobs.
Right, I understand.
And if they have to go and be an advocate for our school district, or if they have to go to a conference, or if they have to go to whatever, I'm going to reimburse them, and I'm going to expect that they are professional enough, that they are only putting on the mileage that's appropriate for where they're going.
Okay.
Good example.
Go ahead.
As a teacher, I drove from Mazamani to Blacker every day. Four point four miles times over whenever I turned it in. I did not get the return mileage. So it was just during the day when I was responsible to go from Mazamani to Blacker.
Right, right.
But there's a set form that they turn in, and then I expect, like, for me, I have to print something off like MapQuest to show the accuracy of how many miles I did, or something like that. So, like Derek's saying, it's so similar to do an open records request. There is something for them to request.
Right.
Can we verify that, like, if anybody's really sick or personal or whatever, if they're taking time off, that they didn't, but, you know, especially for staff that travel between buildings every day, we verify that if they were sick that day, obviously they didn't turn mileage, but our staff are very good at turning in correct mileage, so I've not had issues. And I've been in that position for three and a half years before I got the position. So, I prefer, I prefer very accurate.
Okay. All right. Moving on. District Business Board issues. Discuss possible action regarding the board reorganization. We need to designate one or more public depositories. And you will find on page eight, thank you. Currently, we are Peoples Community Bank and State Bank of Cross Plains.
Move to Peoples Community Bank and the State Bank of Cross Plains are public depositories.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Discussion. Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right. Designation of official newspaper for publication in legal notices. Currently, that is the New Sicilero.
Move to designate the New Sicilero as our official newspaper for publication legal notices.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Okay.
In discussion.
Do you want to remove it there for Mark's updates?
No, we could ask him. We could talk to the editor. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well.
Go.
Designation of primary legal counsel and authorization for administration to obtain other counsel as needed. Currently, we use David Friedman as our primary and give our superintendent the ability to go to others if there is a needed basis.
Move to designate David R. Freeman as primary counsel with officer authorization for administration to obtain other counsel as needed.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. So for those of you who don't know, David is also one of the, on the lower end of the pricing spectrum for attorneys, so.
He's in Madison.
Don't count. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. CISA Two representative. Do I have any nominations for CISA Two?
I'd like to nominate Cindy by two.
That's not good. CISA Two representative. All right.
Yeah, I know, it's fine. Yeah, I'm actually very.
All right, cool. Jim?
Yes.
I'm assuming there's no other nominations? James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
I'll say yes.
All right. Kim?
Isaiah?
Just, and I'll vote yes as well. Committees. So there's, of course, going to be some changes because of changes on the board, so I would ask that you would get to meet the, any committees that you guys would prefer to be on, and if you could do that before the next board meeting, just send it to my email, and I will work everything in. So if there's any that you're on now that you do not want to be on, also indicate that, even if you don't have a preference on where you want to go, you just don't want to be on a committee, let me know that as well. So, and then I will put everything together, and if you don't get anything to me, you get to go where I put you. Yep. Yeah. So, and I will have that together for the next, for the next board meeting. All right. Moving on, capital projects. Update by HSR on capital project planning and design. You're up.
Okay. Tonight, I've got Scott Gouralsky with me tonight. He's with William McGinn and did the survey for your site here, and Scott's going to be involved. Obviously, he's got good information and knowledge about your site that can do the survey, so.
Did he scare the other guy off?
Jake, no, Jake, he's back drawing, okay? As we speak. But Jake, Jake, again, I'll give you an update on the capital project in Meso. And what we're thinking about doing is, because the projects are so different, they're totally different, the Meso cooling project versus the parking lot here, we definitely feel that we should separate these projects when we bid them out, okay? So an update on Meso first, if you will. We are intending to have these set of drawings. Remember, you bid the chiller already, the piece of equipment, it goes about $37,000 if I recall. We're going to bid, send the rest of the project out this week, we hope, by the end of the week. And we're looking at, because of the complexity of the project, the installation, and those kinds of things, we're looking at, we haven't confirmed this with Mark yet, but we will, looking at maybe the 14th, usually about 10 o'clock, for a walkthrough, pre-bid walkthrough of contractors, inviting contractors to come and look at the project. We'll be here, we'll walk through with them, answer any questions. From that, sometimes there's an addendum that comes out, an addendum of information, clarification items, things like that, that we'll send out shortly after that. And then we're looking at maybe the 28th as a possible bid date for the Meso cooling project. Now, we're looking at breaking that project down into, the base bid of that project is to install the chiller, okay? And we're looking at two potential alternates for that project as well. One is, well, both of them have to do with the efficiency measures that we talked about before. One is the VFDs, the variable frequency derived components to all the pumps and motors and those kinds of things. So we'll have an alternate bid for that piece, but then we're also looking at an alternate bid for the controls, the control system for that building. Again, trying to match what we got, what you got here already, so that they're compatible with those kinds of things, okay? So that's kind of, in a nutshell, where we are on the Meso cooling project. Any questions on that one? Okay.
What were the dates, again, please?
I'm sorry?
What were the dates?
The dates were the 14th, and that would be around 10 o'clock, I'm guessing, to be confirmed yet. And then the 28th, Thursday, the 28th, and normally our bid times are 2:00. I'm assuming we'll probably have the bids delivered here to the district office, it will come down, and we'll have a bid opening at that time. And then we'll, once we get the bids, we'll review them, you know, do a little investigation work on our own, and then come back to you guys with the. And again, what we're trying to do with this project, as well as the high school parking lot, and the high school middle school parking lot, is to try and give all of us some options to pick and choose from. When we have all these numbers finally there, we'll hopefully have some options, even though we already lost your children, okay? And we did that for lead time purposes. We wanted to get that ordered, so we made sure we could get it to time.
And that is ordered, and everything is on track with that?
Yeah, yeah, everything seems to be on track. And good people there. So, now, high school, middle school parking. So now, on the high school, middle school parking lot project, we'll get up here a little bit and kind of point out a few things. This is the survey that Scott did, Scott is firm. Lots of detail on here, gives us all the existing conditions, all the existing topographic information and certainly the layout of your current parking lot and situation. We toyed around with several different scenarios and we've got more in the backs of our minds that we want to share. But before I get into this, let me give you, back up a little bit, a little ballpark scenario for a schedule for this project, okay? What we're thinking here is that, again, we're not going to start construction, obviously here is a school's way out and the project shouldn't take terribly long, to be honest with you. Not nearly as long as the, the children project, depending on how far we go with this and we'll talk more about that in a minute. But we're thinking at mid-May, thereabouts, to have, to have this construction, the construction documents ready to go off for bids, okay? And then we probably receive bids in early June, we're thinking. Couple weeks to bid, it shouldn't take long. And then we'll have those numbers right about when the school gets up for, for all of us to make some decisions on. If that works for your schedule, that's kind of what we're thinking. This, this scenario, we did some very simple minor modifications to this thing, where we maintained the existing kind of ninety degree parking over here. We got rid of the loop here because we're thinking that that has a lot of space there and, and maybe we can clean that up a little bit so there's not so much traffic, chaos if you will. Trying to organize it a little bit more and then also create some more areas for potential expansion capabilities of your building. We don't want to lock your building into a little tight shell that we can't do anything with it after, you know, in twenty years or whatever we decide to do. Up here, we maintained the diagonal parking, we changed the angle of it a little bit to just get a little bit more efficient with it. And then we also, right now, along this road, along, along the side of the building here, there's a recessed area, kind of indentation where folks can drop off, there's no parking along here. So we've decided to, let's just make some parking all along the front of the building and come in a little bit down on this end of the lot. Now, we gained, we're gaining, right now we've got about two hundred and seventy-eight stalls currently, roughly, we just counted on the aerial, there were loopholes there. But with this new layout, we're getting about three hundred and thirty-eight stalls. So we're gaining a pretty good chunk of parking area. We still have the ability to come in here, we want to start to lay this out a little bit for future parking to see how that will work. But that's kind of one of the reasons Scott's, I want Scott involved is to see how, how our drainage and all those things are going to start to work because there's a significant area down here that's retention area. So we want to look at that. Now, one of our concerns here is, is, well, number one, I like consistency, so I'm, you're going to see in another plan here, is let's do, do all diagonal parking, so everything's the same. We're certainly still concerned about drop-off areas, adequate drop-off areas, we always like to separate bus and car traffic, really good to try to do that, we haven't done that here yet. So we're going to explore a few different options with John's ideas yet, but another scheme, very subtle change that we looked at here again, is just to get all diagonal parking. You can kind of see the flow that we're creating here, it's coming in here, two-way here, we've got one-way arrows here and a one-way arrow here. So we got traffic going this way and this way if you want to park or drop somebody off or get to this parking lot. And then we cut it out here, this traffic simply comes down and then goes out or, or comes around and comes out, you know. So we gained a few more stalls this way and, you know, it certainly makes some sense organizationally. But we still feel that we need to explore at least the idea of two separate drop-off areas, one for cars, one for buses. And I haven't talked to you much about this yet, but we want to spend a day or two and just explore those ideas. So I guess, you know, we're, we're still working on the drainage thing, that's going to be a big challenge for us, especially with downspouts, we want to get the water off the building and control that somehow. So those will be key things once we get kind of a layout. So I guess I'm looking for some just general initial reaction from you guys on what we're doing here and kind of give some feedback for that.
I've got two things, first, the one thing that I like about keeping that loop, the circle.
This guy?
Yes. The, the one thing I like about that, two, two reasons I like it, number one, I like it during football games because you block it off so nobody parks there. It gives the ambulance plenty of space to be there and get right out and you don't have to worry about anything, you're just gone.
Right.
The, the other thing I like about it is, is with the buses to give them more of a.
So their turning radius.
Yes, better turning radius. The other question that I have, and I know you've talked about this before, but is to put somehow get an exit off of, onto the.
Here we go. It's still there.
To do, to get an exit coming across here.
Across there.
To, to get right out.
Yeah.
But we've talked about it, I just want to, you know.
And, and two things, just for, the first two will come out and do bus radius checks at any time, so I just want to share that they're willing to do that.
So even if this looks different, they're willing, you know, if you think this is what you want, how, how could we create that concept?
And the engineers, to restate that having a second exit, the engineers that developed that intersection said no to anything any closer. Move it, you could move it closer up here, but this would create confusion. And so they're, they, that's what I heard is continually, that that's got to be dedicated right there.
I agree with that confusion piece because sometimes if you get too many choices from people, then it's chaos. But initially, we drew one there and, you know, because of what we heard from the state guys and, you know, and Mark, it's, we started to rethink that. Now, we, we did talk also, Scott just mentioned this, maybe we look at a separate drop-off here for, for cars, if you will. Separate from buses or maybe this is, you know, I don't know, but I, we need to think a little bit more on that piece. This works, this works pretty well, but there's some tweaking I think we can do to it that will enhance it a little bit more. With this design, there wouldn't be any cross traffic. Correct. It would never. Very little. Yeah. Yeah. It would just flow. Pretty flow.
Well, that's assuming that people follow the arrows.
Right.
There always is operator at air for the next ten years based on what they're selling in parking lots.
Right.
What was a jump in parking spots?
I'm sorry?
What was a jump in parking spot?
A jump is, what is it, seventy?
Seventy additional spots. And that's.
That's any.
That's mainly on.
Yeah.
Because usually we're to bank.
Really right along here is where we get a lot of.
That would be helpful.
Yeah. Up here?
Definitely.
Yeah, there, there's a few more, yeah, quite a few more there, yeah, you're right, because this is parallel, parallel parking right now. And, and the way we did that was by diagonal parking, you know, we, we did minimize the width between the stalls and, and that kind of thing. And this is your parking line right here, so we can't go out that way anymore. We could go this way further if we wanted to, but we chose to utilize, try to utilize at least the existing sidewalk. And that's a good thing or bad thing, it kind of gets us into some budget discussions, you never really said how much you want to spend on this baby. Based on the geotechnical work, there could be some soil remediation here, base redoing. And, but, but the bottom line here is we think right now this project, well, wide range, it could be anywhere from half a million to close to a million if you wanted to go game busters with it.
Oh, you want.
I didn't think you would, but I just wanted to give you the wide range of options we have here.
My, my only concern is the space between the new parking, even moving that sidewalk or removing the sidewalk, however you want to put it. My, my concern is that space between the grass now, close to fourteen, and where that cutout is, that's a lot to try to ask.
Right.
Between that spot and where the cutout is right now on the, for the drop-off.
Right.
The current sidewalk.
Right.
That space in between there, I, I'll tell you what, if you could get four vehicles parked in there, you'd be one hell of an engineer. Because that seems like not enough space for four vehicles.
Tight in there?
That's, that's my only concern.
Right. Well, again, we're going to, we're basing these on codes, the spacing is based on codes and guidelines, design guidelines for parking lots. So the work provided folks handle it, right?
My, my concern again with that statement is I don't doubt that you've got it to code. But every day of the week, you've got seventy to whatever, a hundred kids out there, half of them being sixteen, that are just driving.
They're, yeah.
That's, that's my concern. If that was, if that was West Town, you know, okay, I get it, I mean, or whatever, but it's a high school.
That's a great point.
And here's a question I have is what is driving the need for more spaces? And what I ask about that is how many nights? Because, because I want to ask, how much are we going to spend for ten to fifteen nights? I think that's got to be part of the, the set, and so my question to ask of the board is, why do we need more spots? And that may answer some of Tom's, your questions, but how many, or, and then the follow-up would be, how many spots do we need? I mean, I know it's full, the two times a year that we park our grass, craft fair, graduation.
Yeah.
And if, if, if it's okay, but that's, that's what it is, we, we know that. But short of that, you know, what, what would be drivers, you know, what, what are the drivers? How much, you know, are we talking about, you know, football, we play four, four home high school games a year. How much of that is a driver? You know, the component that no one wants to hear is this, what's the closest place to park for a football game is right here. We can't, we're never going to make this spot closer. And so, you know, those questions as we move forward, how, how do we rank that out? Because like Brad said, half a million to a million is predicated on some of those answers. I mean, the remediation, as we talked and just confirming, the, the question marks lay a little bit here and then this part right here. And that's, this is new in ninety-five.
Right.
And this is new also.
Right.
And then this is new.
How many spaces do you think would be added if you, along the lawn, up parallel to fourteen?
Yeah.
How many spaces do you think would be added there just moving the, the two, the two sections down, you know?
The current.
Probably, if you went to diagonal on that instead of parallel and just moved those two diagonal ones down a little bit, how much added parking would be there? Just to go from, basically to go from parallel parking to.
Yeah, but you, you double them, you probably double them, right now that's about, what was that? Fifty, so we got about. So, I mean, you'd probably add forty, thirty to forty, probably thirty. Does that seem right?
Yeah.
About thirty, if we went from par, parallel to diagonal, yeah.
Okay.
Just move it down, and that's obviously something we should look at.
Now, the other question, if you move those, if you move that set down, what is that going to do to all the lighting?
Yeah, well, that's another key.
Well, as, as it sets, the lighting doesn't move right now.
Correct.
As that, as that is proposed, the lighting does not move.
Okay.
I mean, some of the other doing is redoing the lines.
Yeah.
In a way, you know, either it's.
Yeah.
There's redoing the line.
Well, but you're adding, you're adding more space between the lawn, along the, you're not.
This, this.
We can't get any closer to fourteen.
Right.
The only place where you could add space is if you, if you move, the only way this changes is if we move the sidewalk here. Then, Tom, then that could, could create a shift if we elect to. But this is, this is as, as is.
Just changing the angle.
Yeah.
In the lines.
Yeah.
So what, what you decide to do at pitch points is another question, but it's, what are the conscious decisions we're going to make? You know.
The other thing we, we haven't looked at, and Mark, you asked us about this the other day, is this area right in here, you know, where that old driveway was. We want to study that a little bit more in terms of water flow, but then also how potentially you can utilize that space more optimally. Get this as efficient as we possibly.
Because your topo, I think, would show that this is pretty well pitched. Yeah. The closer the lines are, that, that suggests, it's just like doing the weather, they don't have the blue screen. But the closer it is, that, that indicates a change in elevation, so that's the.
Well, that would make that corner not so tight to get around.
Could be, yeah, the, the biggest thing is, and the monuments are there.
You have them on there?
Yeah, you do. We have, this, here's the angle, this is, this is ours, where my finger is, is ours.
Yeah.
The rest is the state's. So, yes, there's some flexibility, but.
Yeah.
But there's a pitch, you know, that's, that's the part of the pitch and then how the drainage happens.
The other thing that kind of falls into the equation is, how do we remove snow? We want to make that as simple and as efficient as possible and, you know, and then curbs, you know, you have the curves versus no curves in some areas, some key areas. All that stuff comes into the water flow equations and calculations that we'll be doing. So we got a good start, we got some good direction, I think, that's the solutions, more discussion, I think we need a little bit more discussion with you next time we come down. And then we'll definitely have a few scenarios. And again, the goal here will be to have perhaps some alternate bids where we can maybe add, you know, do a portion of the, of the site, do it right. And then maybe there's other pieces that we don't have to do or can be deferred if the price, prices get too, to be a little over, over, you know, bearing. So we get some, hopefully some choices with some, maybe some alternate bids to be able to talk about this stuff.
So getting rid of the loop gave us more parking?
It gave us more parking again, you know, we didn't come to parking up here per se.
Right.
Because we didn't, you know, didn't really go designate areas for parking there, but.
Is that where a lot of your added expenses is putting, is getting rid of that green space? Because they don't have concrete now.
It's not a huge part of our, of the project expense, parking costs, I don't think.
Because you, what you would do is you would grind out the, the loop, you'd grind it out, take it down to a certain level.
Yeah.
And then reintroduce.
Yeah.
Yeah, the wild card is, is what's underneath, you know, we punch the borings, there was amber, there's forges, blacktop everywhere. And some of that's stable and some of it's not. And then for some reason, there's about ten inches of gravel, but the gravel that's underneath there, according to the geotechnical engineer, he was saying it was marginal. You know, so maybe it's good, maybe it's bad, you won't know until you peel it off. And then underneath that gravel, that's where there's a bunch of clay, because wherever they built parking on, wherever they built it, they must have brought in for some reason a couple of feet of clay to fill it. Because underneath that clay, it's all sand.
Right.
Clay is not an ideal.
Well, it's because of.
Of, of moisture.
Yeah.
Or the drainage.
It holds it in it, yeah, and the freeze thaw cracks your blacktop.
We saw that outside the gym. You know, the other concept where we're exploring, if I can hold this up, is, you know, in the end, in the beginning when we started this project, is what options to, to make this site, you know, a centerpiece, optimize it and everything. So if this is something people are interested in, and, and agreed. So, if this is something people are interested in, and, yeah, and agree, you know, you need to have good journey previous, and the last thing we want to talk about is, I've been places and turned, roundabouts, I always call them, wrong thing, I've seen the DOT have to go in and make adjustments, we don't want to have to do that. But this also gives us options, you know, right now, this is, when this was built, no one thought this would be an entrance just for the middle school. And then we have the high school here. Now, this is our primary entrance, but then how do we build in capacity and make this site more efficient, and also representative of, you know, who we are as a district? So, this provides an option that we haven't always talked about, and the space here, yeah, it is, Brad's right, it provides a great buffer for snow. You know, we have, right now, if we plan accordingly, we have snow this way, and we have snow that way. So, you know, we have to plan, plan into that, or, you know, future options. But this provides us, you know, expansion or opportunities for redesign, understanding that, we talked about several changes in the site, renovation has a higher expense than building new. You know, we have to keep in mind from an operational standpoint that that means more square footage, which means it'll take more to operate. But I give credit to when we did twenty-ten with training, you know, right now, we run basically one of the new boilers, we have three new ones down there, and we have the, I'll call it the middle school boiler on top of it, we're only using one to one and a half on the coldest, one and a half on the coldest day. So, we're set up, actually, there's pedestals down there, in case we wanted ever get bigger, and they were in a row. You know, sometimes when you go to a house, if you're looking to buy a house, and you wish the hot water heater was in a different part, you know, we're set up that way. So, options, not what are we going to do, but build an option for that. So, that's why such the big push here, especially if we talk about remediation, you know, based on the boring.
But you can essentially create seventy extra spots without really creating more physical space, you're just using the space we already have, that's there, just using it more efficiently.
Right.
Do you have parking spots on what I would call the, what used to be the main entrance, like what I call east, but it's not really east? Those are parking?
No, that is east.
Yeah.
Okay, those are parking, now, are your buses going to come down and make the loop and go through two?
Are the buses going to do this?
Yeah, and go through?
That's a good question.
Two sets of vehicles back.
They could do that, or do they do this?
Or do we not have parking there? I mean, that's currently, we have curb parking.
Correct.
You know, and that's, right now.
Can that be parking nighttime only, or, you know, could it be open?
It could be, I mean, there's all kinds of things you could do like that.
That seems like, going back to a little area, it seems that it's too tight to get a bus.
I've also sometimes wondered if completely out there option, if this little area here that nobody parks in, it could be expanded enough for a radius and have all the buses pick up everybody from the back instead of the front completely.
In the back of the building.
Yeah. I think that this parking lot would have to be expanded just a little bit, so that they could make a complete loop, but we have exit doors right there, and the entire middle school, which are the majority of the students who take the bus, would go right out the back and not even deal with the parking lot.
So, they come in on like Olson Road, and they just do it all in that back lot?
No, she's talking about taking the service road in the back.
What it used to be when it was a high school.
Yeah.
Where the students used to park when it was a high school.
Yeah.
It's an ideal situation, if we can find a way to separate the buses and the cars, and get the buses to command their own little place.
Except that would require us to create something new, which will be an added.
Correct. You would have to then prioritize what you do.
Yeah.
But then you wouldn't have so much work to do out in the other.
Right.
Well, but you would also limit future expansion in all directions off the middle school by putting it there.
Right.
That's what that does, that, you know, and it's a good idea also, but if you move it forward, then if you ever consider expansion of this building, then you're going to have to tear that up and redo it.
Although I thought the expansion possibilities would go that way, whereas this parking lot area is over.
Still got to go around it, you still got to go around the building. And you've got a ditch and a pitch that, you know, on that ditch, on the other side of the current loop is, you know, it's easy to walk.
Well, I didn't mean coming this way, I meant coming in the already existing.
Come through.
Go around, make all of this, this parking lot would just have to be expanded ever so slightly, maybe not even, but I think it would have to be, so you just.
That would require a change in ordinance.
Turn around, and then line up that way, and then go back out the same way, that's what I meant.
Yeah, the issues back there are all the connections, Dade Water, the other issue is an ordinance change by the town of Black Earth, you also have all your electricals, all the connections are all right there.
LP.
LP's all there, so it's every, all that, you know, the question would be, you know, what's the tolerance, or do you have to move? I mean, but thanks for clarifying, yeah, I was thinking.
No, no.
Yeah. And we also have a trail now, that is right here. And so, we've got bus traffic right on the trail.
Is that parking lot you hold during the day?
It can run.
Thirty percent.
Thirty, forty percent, yeah. But again, we've also got an easement that essentially runs.
Yeah, the rail.
Well, no, no, easement for the trail.
The trail, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
It's on the full picture.
Yeah, we took some shots of it.
Yeah, oh, you did it that way, yeah.
Yeah. But actually, that parking lot, when I was, obviously, we put buildings, parking lot together, we love to get the buses, the pair of houses separate. But my eyes went to that parking lot right away, because it was off to the side, not everybody's way of it.
So, again, bottom line is, we're looking at a few more opportunities at home, and then, and then go back to your next meeting. When is that? December? That should be good timing, I think.
And you're thinking, the timeline, because you're talking about Brad, is, because we're trying to get some of this worked up, some are, where are we at, or is that too late to make the decision, or do we need to make the decision at the beginning of June? I'm almost, I'm a little.
You can, I mean, we don't have to make a decision beginning of June, I don't think.
Well, we need, but we're hoping to do some of, some of most of the work in June.
In June, yeah, you know, I see what you're saying.
I think you can come back with maybe a couple of different options, and we can narrow it down to a final plan.
Right.
And then you can decide, you know, we can do a cost estimate.
Yeah.
Instruction cost estimate, that you guys can decide what, if you want to phase it, you want to give it an alternate.
Yeah. And again, so the bottom line is, we can bid it early June, and most of that work, a lot of that work can get done in June.
Okay.
So, that's the goal.
That's kind of our goal.
Yeah, I remember that now.
So, what we have to think about, too, is, I was just talking to Tom, because if we do end up adding out over here, eventually, bringing elementary school, whatever, then we wouldn't want one.
Well, the question is, where do you put it? You know, as I pointed out earlier, everybody sometimes overlooks the obvious. You know, if you need more parking, well, where are the students going to be? You know, people talk about, I mean, and I get it, but we have, you know, the old JV Wallfield, you know, could easily be, you know, very similar to what you see between the stadium and Highway fourteen. You know, doing grass and dirt, you know, if you need more parking, grass and dirt's a lot cheaper than the other components.
How many stalls are going to be added by diagonal parking on the middle school side right now? Was there additional ones there?
Yeah.
Either with or without the loop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've got, we're adding eight stalls.
Okay. So, right now, if you just added, went to diagonal parking there, diagonal parking along the lawn by Highway fourteen there, we would add close to fifty stalls.
Yeah, forty, fifty.
Forty, fifty.
Yeah, and I mean, I like the fifty to seventy, I mean, I'm not saying we have to create a hundred and fifty extra parking spots, but if we can do fifty to seventy, we'll start basically the same infrastructure. That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Now, the other thing I want to mention, and Scott brought it up a little bit ago, is the geotechnical work that's been done, the soil borings that have been done, we took six boreings out here. That doesn't mean we know everything that's under these parking lots, so, we definitely are going to hit areas like some of the, even the boreings, the six that we took are varying quite a bit. So, we definitely suggest, whatever we do, we have a contingency map that's going to handle unforeseen, not so good soil conditions that we run into. And that's the bouncing act, we could take a boring every ten feet and engineer this to the T, but it really doesn't make sense to do that, take a little bit of a gamble here, and think that it's probably close to the information that we got on the six boreings and go from there. So, we'll show that and convey that information in our process, and that's when we get down to that next time.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments on this before we move on?
So, the homework is, how many parking spots are out, and how do you foresee open space, or under, you know, open or underutilized space?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Anything more for us, or?
No, you've already talked about the HVAC project, so you're, I mean, you got anything else on that?
No.
Okay.
So, we maybe, yeah.
All right, sounds good, thanks, guys.
I never like to lead a board meeting early, because I know you guys have to stay here, so. Thank you.
Our drive home was a little bit.
Okay, discuss possible action to accept the resignation of Andy Camanetti as middle school basketball coach with thanks of service since two thousand twelve. Thank you, a discussion.
Thank you.
Jim.
Yes, James.
Sandy.
Cindy.
Kim.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Discuss possible action on hiring a head football coach. Do I have a motion to hire Ralph?
Lawland Law.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I'm hoping that we have, he definitely seems energetic, and the board met him, and wish him the best of luck, and I'm happy to have a football coach. Jim.
Yes.
James.
Sandy.
Cindy.
Kim.
Isaiah.
And I'll vote yes as well.
All right, action to approve twenty fifteen sixteen contracts for teachers. Mark?
So, and it should be available to people in the public. Couple things, as I mentioned earlier, we had a change in funding available, and it is a little different than what the admin team was recommending. Initially, the admin team was challenged for, I'd say, starting January, we identified the need to better support students that qualify for special education, and so our goal was to have at least one special ed teacher in every building. So, they were challenged with the need, or the expectation, we provide an option without adding additional cost to the district. As you heard earlier, and be acting on, we currently have a health insurance zero increase that has given us some flexibility, and allow us to staff three sections per grade level four K through fifth grade. And so, the change is that, the recommendation for Bree Willington to be in fourth grade and Liam Wentz to be in fifth grade, we would post a special ed position open. So, the other thing, the other changes that occurred, we also believe that, when all possible, we would like to add, based on student need, an additional halftime position in special ed at Black Earth. We've done this, the recommendation is that Becky Chutz will do special ed in the afternoon, early childhood in the morning. And we'll post a point zero halftime position for four K. The other change will be that we will offer two four K sections in the morning, along with EC, that will be a change, and then one four K section in the afternoon. So, that is the recommendation for the contracts for teachers fifteen sixteen. I think it's very important, you know, to convey to our staff, they know, they've gotten emails saying there'll be no layoffs, but actions speak louder than words, so that's the recommendation right now. And then, you know, in general, we are down overall at the middle school, high school, one FTE production, based on the master schedule S.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the contracts for teachers for the twenty fifteen sixteen school year as presented? Do I have a second? Thank you.
And if I could just add, we have a negotiated, the teachers will get a contract with this year's salary, we will enter into negotiations for CPI, again, CPI is one point six two, and we would need to negotiate that with teachers in the future.
Okay. Jim.
Yes, James.
Sandy.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah, and I'll vote yes as well. All right, action to approve the twenty fifteen sixteen appointments for support staff employees.
So, the change is, again, based on student need, we'd like to add three halftime, part-time positions at Black Earth, they would work with the four K or EC programs, you know, we'll finalize everything, and then we also need one more educational assistant at the middle school, high school to support student planning.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments for support staff employees as presented?
So, second.
Thank you. Other discussion? Harry Nunn, Jim.
Yes.
James.
Sandy.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well.
Action to approve the twenty fifteen sixteen appointments for administrative assistance.
Okay, so, we currently, as listed, we have those staff members, the one new position that we've been talking about, we've expanded our IT network, we need to provide better support to the network as well to our staff, that would be an at-will position, under administrative assistant, at-will position, and we would, you know, your approval will allow us to go ahead and post that position.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments for administrative assistance for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen sixteen school year as presented? So, thank you. Another discussion? Harry Nunn, Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yeah.
Sandy.
Cindy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well.
Student issues, action to approve overnight field trip of the Wisconsin Association of School Council's Annual Middle School State Conference to Marriott West Madison.
Move to approve that trip.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yeah.
Sandy.
Cindy.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well.
Insurance, discuss possible action to approve health insurance plan for twenty fifteen sixteen.
So, the recommendation would be to continue to work with Unity, zero percent increase for renewal. And again, as I said before, we looked into our options, we still could have bid out if we weren't happy, we appreciate the work that our staff did in adjusting. if we weren't happy, we appreciate the work that our staff did in adjusting, we've changed twice. We talked about it in two thousand nine, changed in two thousand ten, that was a big change, and we had a change last year. We're fortunate not to have to change any benefits this year at zero percent, but again, uh, every year we're gonna have to, we'll ask them to sharpen the pencil. Healthcare, in terms of bidding, um, last year, Unity got our business because they were interested in business, that as Dean, P plus, I'm sure GHC are also monitoring, they would like to get in the game, I think because other companies were becoming aggressive is why, in the end, we got a zero percent increase, so, uh, very positive for our staff and quite for the budget too.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the health insurance plan for twenty fifteen sixteen? Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Harry Nunn, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
No other commanding meetings yet because we don't have.
What I'm wondering a bit is, a note, um, the week of May twentieth is, is not good for, for me personally, I think I've completed with the board, that I'm gonna do some stuff, take some vacation time, do, spend time with my dad and, and my mom, perhaps for a couple days, but, um, perhaps a June first board meeting to replace the second, I think that would allow us to address, or, you know, if other things come up, that would maybe be a good time if we do, we would may have three board meetings in June, but that would allow us to have some stuff lined up and ready to go. A June first may allow us to also do final approvals on the HVAC at the very least, you know, and by meeting twice early June, it just gives us the opportunity to forward on some stuff.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Oh, just a reminder, June eighth is the transition ceremony, not the biggest deal, but there will probably be, no, it'll be done by five thirty, I guess. Never mind. It's just this room is sort of taken so far. It's okay, I'll clean it up.
Oh, we can, we can meet, let's just plan to meet in the middle school, see then, this makes everything easier.
That's on June eighth?
All right, um, do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to State Statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C, for the consideration of employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government or body has jurisdiction, or exercises responsibility, and in nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E, um, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. When the executive session ends, the school board meeting is adjourned. The motion.
So. Second.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Sandy?
Sandy?
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.